Roll call, please.
Mr. Shi.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Here.
Ms. Pang.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Romano.
Here.
Ms. Anjana Patel. Mr. Lugo.
Here.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Here.
Mr. Erica.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Opening statement, please.
Yes. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, C-231 Sunshine Law, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Offices. This notice was also posted on our website.
Thank you. So today is a combined meeting, so we're going to go through the closed session first. So in accordance with the NGSA Section 10, Colon 4-12, the Edison Township Board of Education adjourns to confidential session for the purpose of discussing the following: confidential personnel and board matters, student matters, pending litigation, legal matters, contracts, property acquisition. Now can I have a motion to adjourn to the previous session?
Motion.
Oh, second. You all same time. You got them?
Got it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll be back at seven o'clock.
All right.
All right. Can I have a motion? Uh, wait, do I need a motion for this?
Reconvene.
To reconvene? Yeah, okay. Can I have a motion to reconvene the open session?
Motion.
Okay. Second, Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the president reports. The school year's been going pretty fast. We're at, you know, almost to the end of it, at Thanksgiving. I just want to take this opportunity to wish everyone a happy and relaxing holiday season and, you know, looking forward to the last months of the first semester and, you know, enjoy the time off. All right. So superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shi. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board of Education. I want to begin by wishing everybody a happy and healthy holiday. Thanksgiving is a great time to spend with family and friends. I wish all of you the best and looking forward to a long extended weekend. I'm actually going to keep my comments extremely brief tonight. We do have two presentations this evening, one by the talented staff here at Edison High School as well as the supervisory leadership team that has done an unbelievable job in making sure that our strategic plan has come to fruition in relationship to career academies, programs, pathways, and ensuring that our students have opportunities and access to content, areas of interest above and beyond any other school district within the area. So with that said, Mr. Shi, I will turn it back over to you and then we can... unless you want to move forward with the presentations right now.
Do you want to do the students first?
Yeah, let's do the students first.
Okay, yeah, so they can... they might have to go home, do the homeworks. All right, so why don't we have... since we have the student representatives here, and why don't we have them go first? And if they want to go home, do their homework and study for the final exam or whatever, you guys could feel free to leave. So Edison High, so Selena Luong, right?
Luong, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Um, hello, my name is Selena Luong. I am the vice president of the Student Council at Edison High School. And there's been so much excitement happening around our school this past few weeks and even more looking forward to the winter season. Starting off November 13th, we had our annual volleyball for charity event, which was an amazing success with all the great team costumes and the very intense rallies that we had for the grand prize. We also had the... right after that, on the Friday, we had November 14th, the De Wallet Dance that had amazing outfits, dazzling lights, and amazing food as well. We also had students come out on the 15th in the cafeteria in the morning to help out with the PTSO Holiday Bazaar. We had the Chinese Culture Club have like a movie night with the hit film Demon Hunters. We also have winter sports starting up. As you can see, I'm wearing a wrestling shirt. So wrestling, swim, basketball have just started their tryouts and we look forward to their season coming soon. We also... I also want to give a shout out to something that happened never before at Edison High School. Last Tuesday, we had the first three Division One signers. Dominic Innocenti and Robert Roma signed to Wagner College in Staten Island and Connor Murphy also signed to Division One baseball for Monmouth University. So go Hawks and go Seahawks. Looking ahead, this Friday, we'll be cheering on our alumni at the hockey game at the club at Woodbridge. So look forward to that. I also wanted to take note of what happened last Thursday. The National Art Honors Society Program found out that they won the Crossley Costume Cruiser Contest. So this is the first year they've done it nationally and Edison High School was able to surpass 42 different states across the country. So here's the record player right here and we are so proud to have this opportunity from Ms. Gavora, she signed us up. And the theme band together really did have Edison High School come together as a whole, not just the art programs, but also the music programs, the choir program. We had all of them work on our social media and we were able to get 16,000 likes and votes in total. We were first place in our region. We had 12,000 more than second place. So we really rocked the social media. We really rocked the votes. And it wasn't able to happen without the Edison Eagle family. I really appreciate them. With this, like, we had so many different students work with it. We had Juliana Sanchez, who's an aspiring interior designer. We had Quadro Boateng, who is a track star and loves music. We had Ashley Shijinggao. She is amazing at the violin and she did the classical part. So we had so many different people on the Edison team work onto this record player and it really showed through our process on our social media and everything. So I was so proud to see us not only win, but come together as a family and as Edison has to win this amazing accomplishment. We also won $2,500 for the art program, which is pretty great and I hope we go to the Met for a field trip. I cannot be more prouder than my fellow students at Edison High School. I really appreciate how everyone helped us together and made our dream a reality. Edison High this month proved that anything can happen if we come together, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Ross is going to have nothing to talk about now, so maybe he won't speak tonight.
Well, he always has something else to talk about. Don't worry about it. And he can have more than six minutes to talk about it. He knows that. Thank you very much, Selena. Okay, so Arush Bola, right? Okay, go ahead.
All right, so good evening, everyone.
Get the microphone closer. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Arush Bola and I am a junior at JP Stevens High School, which is 27 minutes away from here. And I am a co-president of our student council. As we move through the month of November, we have accomplished a lot, especially with the end of this first marking period. And it's been encouraging to see students adjusting to the new changes introduced, such as our new auditorium and the brand-new ceiling, which has been incredible. And they're also approaching this next marking period with a great mindset. This month also had a lot of meaningful events. For example, under the leadership of one of our own assistant principals, Mr. Robinson, our school honored Veterans Day through our Field of Fags display, which I recognize a lot of faces here. And with this, we also raised nearly $2,000 for the Disabled American Veterans Organization. And beyond this, we also saw the opening of the new JPS Fitness Court, which we hope becomes a vital part of our school's athletics. And lastly, JPS Play Unified participated in the Cool School Challenge, where they started with a 5K dash and it ended with a plunge in the ocean, which I'm sure was really cool. In terms of our clubs, our honor societies have been continuing with inductions and our clubs have beginning... have been begun to enter these new competitions as it's now competition season. Alongside this, the JPS Theater Company had their fall play, which was "You Can't Take It With You", which ran from the 13th to the 15th and it brought life to our new stage. And I got to say, the new stage is incredible, but it's also because I'm coming from a band guy. On top of this, the JPS Marching Hawks won the NJ State Championship at TCNJ and they finished off their season with a high note. And then in the beginning of November itself, with athletics, the freshman and JV Boys Soccer Team won their GMC County Championships. And as fall sports have wrapped up, the winter sports are in motion with tryouts. From the student council side, we've used this month to work a lot with our community service, such as working with our own FCCLA for the Middle Six Replenished Food Pantry to support families facing food insecurity. Additionally, we're having a calendar raffle, which I have any, so if you guys would like any... sorry for the shameless plug, but I can sell them right now. But we're going to be having a raffle every day for the month of January. And looking ahead, we have JPS Got Talent and we also have our winter pep rallies in December. Overall, November has been a month of activity, progress, and preparation. And even though things are clearly getting busier, especially me being a junior, it's great to see how the rest of the JPS community has been persevering and I'm confident that the rest of this year will be just as memorable as this short period was. Thank you all for your time and support for our community.
Thank you. Really great. So just one take-home homework for you. I heard some rumors there might be still some issues with the bathroom at JP Stevens. Can you find it out and bring it to the next board meeting? Whoever comes.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I don't know too much in my experience because I really use the really good ceiling bathrooms, but yeah, I'll definitely get to know.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So you guys can go home if you want. You feel free to stay. Then we're going to have our presentations. All right. Dr. Alderelli.
Thank you very much. First up in the batting order is the principal of Edison High School, Mr. Charles Ross.
I'm going to defer my time to the Edison staff member who's been doing the most work behind the Fame Program, our former Teacher of the Year, Ms. Leanne Rubiano, who'll lead the student presentation.
Good evening, Dr. Alderelli, Dr. Huss, Mr. Toth, members of the Board of Education and members of the Edison community. My name is Leanne Rubiano and I'm a teacher at Edison High School. I'm also an Edison High School graduate. I would like to begin by expressing my sincere appreciation to Dr. Alderelli and the board for your continued support for the Rutgers Fame Storytelling Program. Rutgers Fame, which stands for Food, Agriculture, and Marine Ecosystems, is an 11-week program that 18 Edison High School students had the opportunity to participate in this fall. Once a week, and even twice, on days that we had off from school, our students visited Cook Campus to work directly with graduate students and real-world scientists inside their laboratories. Throughout the program, they not only deepen their understanding of science, agriculture, and food systems, but also strengthen their interviewing, critical thinking, media production, and storytelling skills. Each week, I was truly impressed by their passion, growth, and engagement. In small groups, students produced their own mini documentaries, researching, interviewing, filming, and editing in Final Cut Pro. We are incredibly proud of their work and it is my pleasure to invite you all to our end-of-program showcase on Tuesday, December 9th, at 5:30 in our brand-new Edison High School cafeteria, where these films will be presented. This program has provided our students with meaningful connections to their community and to Rutgers University, another school that I attended. And it highlights so much of what makes Edison High School and our district exceptional. At this time, I'd like to introduce two of our students, Cassandra and Samyuktha, who will share a brief overview of their films. We will conclude with a short video introducing our project. Thank you again for all your support.
Good evening. My name is Cassandra Pereira. I am a junior here at Edison High School and I recently had the privilege and the honor of being a part of the Rutgers Fame Program. So the reason why I joined is because I wanted to broaden my horizons and gain new perspectives into what life looks like after high school, after college, potentially like exploring different career paths. And this program meant a lot to me because it gave me a window into the life of a scientist and it really inspired me because as I was working with these scientists, I realized that these are ordinary people who have a genuine passion for solving real problems that affect so many people. And my team specifically looked into the effects of plant pathogens on crops at large, large-scale agricultural products. And these plant pathogens, they're a huge issue there, causing massive blights in different parts of the world. And the lovely team at the Rutgers Department of Plant Science have recently been looking into new technologies such as CRISPR gene editing technology to create genetic resistance within these plants so that they don't fall victim to the blight, so that the communities that depend on large-scale agriculture will continue to be sustained without the use of harmful pesticides and different chemicals that we don't want in our food. And I'd say the most important experience from my time at Rutgers was the expansion of scientific knowledge and this exposure to a completely different field that honestly, not much of the population can say that they've had. So I feel incredibly privileged. I'm so grateful to all the people who helped make this happen. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Good job.
Hello, my name is Samyuktha Nair and I'm a senior at Edison High School. For my fame project, my group and I focused on Dr. Rongdi's lab and her work with tissue cultures, gene editing, and genetic modification, and exploring how these innovations can reduce global food insecurity. Being a part of this program has been incredibly rewarding because we were welcomed into Rutgers Labs and we had the chance to meet scientists and learn directly from people driving these breakthroughs in the real world. And we were also able to work as part of a USDA grant, which is such an incredible opportunity and it really shows the real-world impact that research can have on food insecurity as a whole. Now, I've worked on children's nutritional advocacy since fifth grade with the American Dairy Association and it's been such a highlight to work with others so passionate about food insecurity research at Rutgers. And it really just goes to show that there are so many avenues you can get involved to help other people and the underprivileged. So we also had the unique opportunity to create a documentary that highlights these pivotal scientific advancements and the impact they can have on the world. And I just think that it's been such a great opportunity to work with like-minded people who are driving forth such a valuable cause. Now, I'd also like to intro our kind of intro clip for this program that's been created. So here we go. Thank you so much.
All right, this is Mr. Ross from Edison. Hi. I'm so glad that my alma mater, Rutgers University, and the Fame Program have gotten together to bring our students into the lab where they can do real research with real Rutgers scientists, but also just as importantly, find ways to tell the story of the research to let the masses find out about science in that 21st century visual way.
Welcome to our lab. I find myself counting down. This is probably like one of my most favorite parts of the day. This is not an opportunity a lot of people get access to and I had it and I had the chance, so I just took it.
It's not every day that you get to meet with scientists and ask them questions that you have.
The Fame Program, it has been the most exciting, engaging, thought-provoking, scientific experience that our students ever had an opportunity to do. Students were learning while creating a story. Our students left with the best experience ever.
I love science. Ever since I was little, I always loved it.
So what is the velocity?
We learned a lot about a lot of different sensors that the gliders have.
One of my favorite sciences has to be marine science as well as the food and agriculture because I love learning about how it's cultivated.
My whole career has been actively looking at the development and the commercialization of new crops to improve health and nutrition.
They're using genetics and chemistry to engineer plans that can help out communities.
I'm definitely going to make sure that I fully encompass what it means to be active in the STEM field, what it means to see dignity in other people and cherish the resources that the earth gives us.
I've tried to get into labs. I've cold emailed people and a lot of times, as high schoolers, we're not allowed to work inside of a lab. So us being able to go into that lab setting and really get that perspective from the scientists and actually work with them, it's really cool. It's very hands-on.
This is my first time in a science lab. They're very inspiring because they went through a lot of hard work to get here and it's my responsibility to get the message they want across.
I don't think I've ever interacted with a scientist before and to be honest, that really humanizes them. I love learning more about what they've gone through, like their journey.
I interviewed Dr. Rongdi, what specific plans she's been working on for food security to protect lots of people.
As I saw her getting more comfortable with us and just being open to us, I just started to open myself a bit more too.
If you want to think about going to science, doing something that you're good at and you believe in, you can solve a problem.
It gives me a little bit of hope in the future for like food security and it makes me want to work even harder.
It's awesome to see more women in STEM. I want to go into the STEM field. So to see someone who is working so hard and really putting her best self out there every single day is so inspiring.
I feel like there's a lot of mystery behind what do scientists actually do? Who are they? And being here, part of this program, it's really like removing that mystery and like I get to see, oh, these are just these are just normal people who are trying to solve real problems.
Scientists care about humanity. That's mainly what inspired me. Like, I want to be able to help people and also tell their stories.
Feel a lot more comfortable around scientists and working with them and it really helps us to get a hands-on approach to STEM and learning and video editing as well.
Not only do they get to learn about science and interact with real scientists and graduate students, but they get to learn about storytelling too.
It inspires me to want to be like them in the near future.
So every student, you're going to have a chance to show your videos.
So glad our students have this opportunity to see how they belong in the halls of academia and look forward to seeing how this impacts everybody going forward.
This is a great job and I'm really happy that, you know, you guys can see what's going on in the real world. Just a follow-up question. Is this program over? Or we can still get to work with the Rutgers? You know, we have a couple of students work with them as interns or whatever. Actually, I knew the doctor that's worked there, Dr. D. Rong. So any...anything, if we can continue to do that? Yeah, come to the podium.
Thank you. That's a great question. Yes, we're hoping to continue the program moving forward. It's contingent on some funding that Rutgers has to secure. But if they're able to secure it, there's a program that is potentially going to run in the summer as well as a fall cohort the following year. So we hope to gear up another set of students and bring them back to Rutgers to complete the program again next year.
That's great. So the other question is, are all students involved in the Dr. Waxman's program in the summer? Dr. Waxman, the Nobel Prize winner that worked in Rutgers before and he had a summer program for...in area biology. Do we have students, you know, Edison High working with, you know, that program?
To my knowledge. I'm not sure if any current students are working with him, but we can certainly reach out and try to make some connections now that we have some people who work at Rutgers that we can work with to build that.
Yeah, the things that, you know, I should retract. I don't know if the program's still ongoing, but it was going on for many, many years. Dr. Waxman, I think he's the only Nobel Prize winner that worked in Rutgers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so next presentation.
So Mr. Shi, if I may, just provide a little context. As you know, as part of our strategic plan, we are committed to providing students with opportunities to participate in rigorous academies, alternate pathways to really kind of fine-tune their interests in areas that they have a passion for. I want to commend both Dr. Hopman as well as Mr. Soy in relationship to their hard work in this area and making the action steps our goals to come to fruition. So without any further hesitation, they have a brief presentation as well as a sample of one of the many videos that you can see in context with some of the upcoming academies.
Good evening, everyone. I think that was a perfect opening to exactly what and why we have these academies coming. I'm super loud, so I just want to make sure I'm not too loud. But hearing what our students are doing with Rutgers, I think that's exactly why we're bringing these career academies to Edison. So thank you guys for that. So tonight, we're going to present the expansion plans for our high school academies for the 2026-2027 school year.
So we're going to start off, we're going to be sharing an overview of our four academies and the exciting developments planned as we continue to build pathways that prepare our students for college, career, and the evolving global workforce. Our district is committed to providing students with innovative pathways that prepare them for college, careers, and lifelong success. We believe that every student deserves access to learning experiences that are challenging, engaging, and relevant to the world they will enter. At Edison High School, our STEM Academy empowers students to explore science, technology, engineering, and math through project-based learning and real-world applications. Students engage in advanced coursework, collaborative problem solving, and mentorships that spark curiosity and innovation.
I think working within the cohort, the best part of it is we're able to collaborate much more effectively. I've grown a lot with the cohort and as we're able to really easily bounce ideas off each other while also maintaining that sense of family.
Our STEM Academy encourages students to think critically, innovate boldly, and develop skills that are in high demand in today's global economy. At John P. Stevens High School, our biomedical science academy allows students to explore cutting-edge research in biology and healthcare. Students develop critical thinking skills, engage in clinical simulations, and explore pathways in medicine and biomedical innovation.
So I just really grew up around the nature of biomedicals and I really wanted to indulge in it myself. And I found that the biomedical academy at JP Stevens was a great opportunity.
Through our biomedical science academy, students gain hands-on experience that prepares them for careers in healthcare, research, and beyond.
Our brand new computer science academy at both EHS and JPS is designed to prepare students for the rapidly evolving technology landscape. Students gain skills in programming, app development, cybersecurity, and AI, preparing them for the careers of tomorrow.
And now I'm taking AP cybersecurity. And throughout this time, I've learned that computer science is more than just coding itself. You can be a person working in the background, trying to make sure that everything works. Or you could be like an IT developer or go AI. It just has so many different paths for your future.
By giving students access to advanced technology and real-world problem solving, we are helping them become the innovators and leaders of the future, preparing them for jobs that don't even exist yet. Our business academy equips students with the skills to launch businesses, manage teams, and think creatively in a competitive global marketplace. Through these academies, our district is leading the way in innovative education. We are giving students opportunities to explore their passions, develop their skills, and prepare for a rapidly changing world.
Whatever subject you're good at, whatever skills you have, there is something in business for you. And I think that's the beautiful thing about it.
Every student in our district has the chance to engage, create, and excel. And we are proud to support them every step of the way.
So we would just like to kind of give a brief overview of each academy. We're going to start off with the STEM Academy here at Edison High School. It's continuing to grow and evolve. Our STEM Academy provides students with a broad foundation in science, technology, and engineering, and mathematics. Students engage in problem solving, hands-on learning, and collaborative projects that mirror real-world challenges. The program is designed to nurture curiosity, innovation, and analytical thinking. Our biomedical science academy at John P. Stevens is currently in its initial rollout phase, serving a freshman cohort this year. In 2016, I mean, sorry, 2026, 27, the academy continues its vertical expansion, adding a new grade level as cohorts move forward. The biomedical science academy introduces students to the study of human health, medical sciences, and related scientific fields. Students explore how science connects to healthcare, research, and public well-being. The pathway supports students who are interested in understanding how the human body works and how modern science improves lives.
We're really excited to add the business academies at both high schools. The academy will expose students to the principles of leadership, finance, entrepreneurship, and organizational management. Students will explore how businesses operate, how decisions are made in the real world. The pathway will help students build communication, collaborate, and strategic thinking skills, which is relevant to all careers, not just careers in business. We're already planning our, our speakers, some trips that are already in the works for our students. So that's really exciting. And the coursework that's going to come with that. And then our computer science academy, which is going to be running also at both schools, will have two tracks, programming and cybersecurity. Students will engage in programming, software development, cybersecurity, data analytics, robotics, and AP computer science pathways. And the purpose of the academy is to prepare students for careers in computer science, information technology, and other related technical fields. We're also going to be adding a CTSO competition-based program for computer science. So that'll mirror what our business students are going to be able already participate in, which is DECA. So our computer science students will also have opportunities in that aspect as well. So we're really excited for our computer science students. And again, that'll be at both high schools, both pathways at both high schools.
So we did want to share with you important due dates for this year's academies admissions timeline. So the application will open December 5th to all middle, eighth grade, middle school students, and we'll close it on December 23rd. We will be speaking at all the middle schools to share with them and explain their choices for the next school year. On January 16th, teacher recommendations will be due. January 31st, we will have an entrance, entrance exam. Throughout the month of February, we will hold interviews for all the applicants. And then March, the academy acceptance notifications will go out to the families. So this structured timeline ensures an equitable and transparent selection process for all our students.
In closing, we're super excited about the growth of our academies and expanding opportunities that we're creating for our students across the district. We want to thank everyone that was involved in the process, from the Board of Education members, our curriculum committee, all of our district people that helped us along the way, Dr. Alderelli, Dr. Huss, all of our supervisors that are involved in the creation of our curriculums, all of our teachers that are going to be with us in this process. It really takes a village to make sure that our students are getting the best of the best. And I know that Kristin and I are super excited about this, but we're just super excited to see our students that are going to be thriving in September. So thank you. Yeah, so we're super excited.
Excellent. Mr. Shi, if I could make a comment? So first of all, thank you so much for foreshadowing the great things to come here in Edison Township for our students. I echo the sentiments of what Dr. Hauptmann had said. Thank you so much for the Board of Education's support. Our curriculum committee has been on many meetings in relationship to this as well as some of the pillars towards our strategic plan. I thank the committee as well as this board for their support in these endeavors. Just another example of how we continue to push the needle here in Edison Township. So I thank you. Mr. Shi?
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank both of you guys for leading the both academies. And Mrs. Soy, you've been leading the STEM Academy for many years, and we just doubled the number for you this year. And we know we pushed you guys pretty hard. And you know, we got on board early last year and the program's in place in September. So really, you know, kudos to, to you guys for working very hard. And you know, also like thank Rick Owen for leading, you know, this, this effort as well. You know, the business academy is coming up next year. I just want to have one request. If you can post what are the enrollment requirements for these academies online, so it's all clear. And also the timelines, you know, online. So parents can be aware of it and the students can be aware of that.
Yeah, we're gonna meet with the eighth graders. So we wanted to meet with everyone and then put everything up online.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
And no pressure. You also have 14 pathways that's coming up next year, right?
That's the easy part.
Okay, all right. So thank you again and great work. And you know, we want to continue to provide our students with opportunities to, you know, make Edison School District that, you know, one of the best in the, in New Jersey. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So, all right. Review of agenda items. Okay. So yeah, today is the combined session. So before we open up for public comments, we'll have Dr. Alderelli and Mr. Toth review the agenda items. Then we're going to open up, you know, comments for the public comments. Are the personnel unlocked?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shi. Moving forward with the agenda items, we have the, for the board's presentation, the personnel report. As we move forward to administration, we have a couple of highlights right here. I also have the privilege of serving as a Board of Education member for the Ed Services Commission located in Piscataway. This is the annual appointment of that position for the board's review. We have our 2025 October HIB report for the board's approval. Two settlement agreements also on this agenda under administration. For curriculum and instruction, we simply have our field trip approval for Edison High School, JP Stevens, as well as Herbert Hoover, as noted in the Board of Education report there. We also have our professional development for the month of November. And last but not least, our pupil special services report, which was extremely light this month. And that concludes my portion of the presentation. I will turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Toth, for the finance report.
Thank you, Dr. Alderelli. Mine's actually pretty light as well. The first item up is our monthly financial reports in minutes, followed by some contracts. What we have is, we have some building infrastructure improvements. We also have some software licenses and some masonry repairs that are going to be going on throughout the district. Under procurement, we have not received any bids at this time. However, we will be going out to bid for some HVAC projects to get a few of our elementary schools air conditioned. So look to see that next month. I believe it's going to be Washington, JMI, and JMP. That'll be going out to bid next month. And hopefully we can make a successful award in January. Under facilities, we have no change orders. This is, this is great news as well. Grants, we're going to be accepting some grants pre-K along with the Special Olympics grants for those programs. And then we have one item under the transfer, the transportation report for accepting evacuation drills. And that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Now we're open for public comments on resolutions only. Public comments on resolutions only. Anyone? Seen none?
Motion to close public comment?
Thank you. All right. So before I do a roll call on the resolutions, board members, do you have any questions? Because I'm not going to entertain questions when the roll is called. And board members, any questions for any of the resolutions? Seen none? Okay. All right. Can I have a motion to approve personnel agenda? Motion. Second.
Got it. Okay. Mr. Eriko.
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Angina Patel.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes, with the exception of any conflicts that I may have.
Noted. Mr. Romano.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I have a motion to approve administration, curriculum, instruction, and pupil special services?
Motion.
Second.
Noted. Okay. Mr. Eriko.
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Angina Patel.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Mr. Romano.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. For the finance, I think there are a couple items that involve all, all board members, Ralph, myself, Angina, Vishal, and Ronak. So just abstain on those items involve you. Okay. All right. Can I have a motion on finance?
Motion. Second. Okay. Mr. Eriko.
I abstain on anything that has my name on it as a check.
I have, actually, I have all your extensions, but I'm glad that you guys reminded me.
Your, yours on everything else.
Yes. Yes, on everything else, yes. Mr. Ronak Patel.
I, yes, I, but I abstain if anything, my name is in.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Angina Patel.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Mr. Romano.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes, except anything that has my name on it. So.
Noted. Motion carries.
Same for Angina as well. Okay. All right. So we have one committee report, finance and facility. Vishal.
Yep. Hello, everyone. So we had a meeting yesterday evening to discuss the finances. The items that were discussed was, we discussed about the 430 Talmage purchase. There were some easement that was reported by the engineering team. So we were just reviewing the easement on the property. We discussed about the JMI award going to a company called Venus. The code finally allowed us to give the contract to Venus. We also discussed the building lease. There is a building somewhere in Edison where we are trying to see if we can lease the property to start some special aid program and reduce the cost of the students that we pay out of district for those placements. Nothing is finalized. It was just a proposal that we are reviewing. We also discussed the EC Phase 2 Plan project. We are going to revisit that in December. We also discussed the HVAC bit that's going to go out for JMI, JMP, and Washington. We reviewed different lists of contracts that we had awarded. The four, four contracts that were given was to SAM Lab Software Company, $408,000, for AccuScan Company, $490,000, for Mas Masonry, for $81,000, and to Glass Energy for $1.59. We also discussed some security issues. I mean, not issue, but some of the future planning to add more security to all of our school districts. And that concludes the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from board members? Seen none? We're open for public comments. Anyone that have a public comments? I see we have some students. Do, I want them to go first. Do you guys want to speak? If you want to speak, come first. So you guys can go home, do your homework. Don't be shy. Come.
Hello. My name's Satvich. This is Shri San and this is Ashwin. We're all part of a, called, organization called Green Spaces Initiative, a student-run organization in Edison dedicated to improving our local environment and expanding youth engagement and sustainability. We previously reached out to you by email, so we truly appreciate getting to speak with you in person. So we began as volunteer, student volunteers organizing community cleanups and spreading environmental awareness through activities and managed to publish an article too in the newspaper. And since then, we've grown into a collaborative group, working with families, local organizations, and peers to promote environmental stewardship and hands-on learning for younger students. As part of our continued mission, we hope to offer free educational classes for students through kindergarten to eighth grades and introducing them to environmental engineering concepts and sustainable problem solving in an accessible and engaging way. So initially, we contacted the middle school and elementary school students, principals, and, and requested them to share an online flyer, which we have over here. We printed it out. And basically, they said how we were advised, that we were advised that approval must come from, directly from the Board of Ed before schools can distribute or circulate it. That is why we are reaching out today, to ensure we follow the procedures properly and respect district policy. So, and we greatly appreciate guidance from board members on the appropriate approval process for a student organization offering optional, no-cost educational program, any forms, requirements, or any reviews, steps that we should prepare, preferred methods for distributing an electronic flyer to students and families, and any recommendations you may have to help us align with district expectations and best practices in order for these schools to distribute the flyer. So some additional information about our flyer is that we could, we're mostly planning on offering it in person, but we are also considering Zoom format for accessibility. We are also already fully setting up registration, communication, and supervision. And participation is completely voluntary and no school's resources or staff time are required. The flyer will only be shared electronically via email, should the board allow it. Thank you very much for your time, guidance, and consideration. We would be happy to provide further details and sample materials if helpful, and we hope to partner with the district in the future for similar efforts.
Okay. Thank you very much. I actually have your flyer, and I ask you to come to, to show your faces. You're doing a good job, right? So I will forward the information to Dr. Alderelli. So he's going to, you know, review it and, and, you know, if the district policy allows that, he will take care of it.
Mr. Shi, if I may make a comment? Do you have a copy of the flyer on you right now?
Yep.
Perfect. If you wouldn't mind, before you leave, if you want to just give that to Ms. Timon in the back, and I'll take a look at it first thing tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have it electronically as well.
Even better. Thank you, Mr. Shi.
Great job, gang.
Bye.
Thank you, guys. All right. So anybody else? Yes, Sue.
Hello, Sue Campione, ETA Scholarship Chairperson. I just wanted to let any parents of seniors who may be watching to know that I did release the scholarships to the guidance offices at both high schools. Don't have your kids wait till the last minute. When they're applying for colleges, have them fill out scholarship applications. There's lots of money out there, not just from the ETA. But there are some scholarships that are given through the committee, but there are other ones that the students do have to apply for. So make sure you get to guidance and apply for them. And just wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving.
Well, don't, don't, don't leave, don't leave yet. I ask you the question every time. How much is a scholarship?
So we give one scholarship, that's $2,000 at each school, and then two $500 scholarships at each school. And this year, we did also change, there was a future teacher. We changed it to future educator so that it also encompasses guidance counselors, speech pathologists. We know unfortunately, a lot of the students are not going to school to become teachers. So we wanted to open it up to give some more kids the opportunity to apply.
Thank you very much. I know the answer. I want you to say it every time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? You know, do we have any more students? No, we don't have any more students. Okay. So anybody else? Yeah. Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. Thank you all of Board of Education members. And I appreciate the good work you guys are doing in Edison. So not to be negative, first time I'm here, but I have, I could not stop myself to come here and speak to you guys directly. Kind of, it has been bothering me for a very long time. So as I said, my name is Dave and I live in Edison. I have two children in middle school and then one is in elementary school. I'm deeply concerned about the culture our schools are promoting almost daily. I have had to, so many times, meet principals. I have had to, so many times, meet principals, send an email, or either some teachers indirectly, but they pushing their personal political beliefs onto students. I won't name individuals. We all know many teachers here belong to some unions, and they actively promote a woke and left, far-left agenda in the classroom. That's kind of has been bothering me. My biggest concern, however, is the introduction of pornography and adult sexual content, starting as early as the fourth grade. Under the banner of sex education and inclusivity, our children are being exposed to material that are no, that no parent would consider age-appropriate. I have not seen, in Edison or any New Jersey also, any widespread hatred or any discrimination against LGBTQ community in our schools. Yet, there is an obsessive focus on LGBTQ ideology, pride flags hanging in each, almost all the classrooms, pride-themed lunches, counselors wearing rainbow color almost every day, and library and classrooms containing explicit nudity and sexual content that are completely inappropriate for young children. Who exactly is seeing and approving, I don't know, approving these books. Somebody is pushing, I'm not saying that you guys know, don't know, but somehow these books are in the classroom and even in the library. We keep hearing that American students are falling behind compared to the rest of the world, and it's not hard to see why. When so much time, energy spent on emotional, ideological, and identity-based instruction instead of core academic, our kids are suffering. New Jersey has dropped from second place nationally to 12th in educational ranking. We all know that. Our country is no longer producing enough fiscal children, worker, not children, sorry, worker, and the only students who seem to be succeeding, the ones whose parents have the time and resources to compensate for what the schools are failing to teach. Many of us work very long hours to provide our family, and we trust the public school system to educate our children and turn them to a responsible citizen, not to sexualize them from kindergarten through high school. By the time some of these kids graduate, they are more focused on experimenting what every day, everything they have been exposed to, instead of building their future. This has been happening in our country, and everybody knows, New Jersey is one example. If you see, we don't have people who can actually do the work, so it's very unfortunate. On sixth grade, my daughter was told she could choose her own essay topic. She picked three different topics, but her teacher changed her topic to LGBTQ issue. I don't hate anyone, trust me. Neither any of the people hate. It's just the problem is pushing the agenda. Without my knowledge, LGBTQ was pushed, and without her consent, and she was forced to do that, and I did not know that until now. Just yesterday, we found out. My sixth grader kid was given a CNN 10 worksheet as the only news resource, no other option. Even he asked, can I use Fox News kit? No. He said, teacher said, no. No other perspective. I have seen Obama socks proudly displayed on desks, and I have complained to the principal as well. Jokes about President Trump's assassination, teachers are talking in the classroom and kids are listening. I have also complained about that. Bottom line, not, I'm not here for negativity, okay? I do not want to promote that, honestly. But please, make sure our teachers focus on math, reading, science, and real history, not manifestos. Do us a favor, you guys are leaders, to make our classroom as classroom, not an indoctrination playground. I would request you to go home, please, and look up, Google it, Alex Gino. Alex Gino. See his books. Ask your heart if this book should be accessible to a sixth grader. His books are Rick, which were named later than Melissa. Read that book, please. Sixth grader, my kid saw it, he was embarrassed. Then look up The Best At It by Malik Pancholi, The Best At It. Look how innocent they, and appealing the name is. My sixth grader picked up, he put it back, okay, and he told me. They do intentionally, so they can naturally pick up. What exactly, anyways, my time is getting up. I can bring a lot of books name and as elected official and responsible American citizen, created in God's image, you guys. I believe it is your moral duty to fight against this and demand full transparency and parental control over what is placed in our school libraries and classroom. Books, I don't have time, but quickly, I'm gonna tell you these books. Look at this material is being put on those books, okay? This is sexual picture, okay? This is book, perfectly normal masturbating. Is this the book should be in the classroom? Perfectly normal masturbating.
They wrap it up.
Sorry. Okay. James is promoting Pride Lunch. It's fine, you know, no hate. They're giving the candies to the kids, and that's also not very good candies, by the way, to come to the Pride Lunch.
I, I got you.
Gay is good. No, no, just last thing, Mr. Shi, I'm done. Gay is good. In this book, there's an app being promoted where the gay people can find the gay people to have sex. The app is how to sign in, how to do that. That book is already in the library.
I gotta be fair to everybody, so, you know, I gave you more time to finish up. You can leave the stuff to us, so we'll take it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Leave it here?
You can leave it. You can leave it to.
Ms. Cox, right to your left there.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So some of the issues that, you know, you brought up, we have conversations being addressed. So, Dr. Alderelli, you wanna make some comments?
Yeah, yeah. I thank you for your comments. You know, those are some strong issues and accusations that you brought up, and I can assure you that after I dialogue with Ms. Cox and look at the material, that you and I should have a conversation as well. You got it.
Dave, can you write your email on that piece of paper, so we can, you know, okay? Yep. All right, so anybody else? Okay.
Good evening, Matt Revnack, ETA President. So a couple things. First of all, the, just Mr. Shi, you mentioned about the Waxman Scholar Program. I know I did about 50 recommendations a year for 36 years at JP Stevens, and a number of my students were involved with the program.
The program's still ongoing?
As far as I know, it is.
Oh, okay, good.
Okay.
It's a great program.
And many other programs. Columbia Science Honors Program, a lot of kids did it, and many others. So, yes, they're all great programs. And great job, by the way, on the presenters today, both the students and Dr. Halpin and Ms. Tsois. Anyway, congratulations to the board members that were re-elected or elected for the first time. That's Mr. Vishal Patel, Ms. Shannon Peng, and Mr. Russell Azzarello. Again, as always, we look forward to working with you. I'll save my comments for Mr. Romano till December at his last board meeting. The flag ceremony, I attended. As always, a wonderful event over at JP Stevens. I know Ms. White was there. We did talk, and many of the central office administrators, you know, it's great as a former Midshipman at Annapolis to, you know, see what Mr. Robinson has developed there. The whole front field there is full of flags. It's also great to have members of the various services there, some of the recruiters, and it's always great to see one of my former colleagues and administrators, Mr. Romanitz, attend, who was a Vietnam veteran. The fitness courts, I also attended, and that's, I attended the one at JP Stevens, but I know they had the courts here. I think it's great. The only thing I mentioned, Dr. Aldi, can around, get Horizon to put bubbles so they can be used 12 months a year.
That's a lot of ask.
Yeah, I know. But, no, it's great, because you know what? I personally, growing up, I was never into like weightlifting and all, but stuff like that, I always enjoyed. So it gives, you know, people a different way of keeping fit and, you know, using their bodies in different ways to, you know, strength, for strength, uh, strength training. I also want to address what was just said, because your union was used. I am the president of the teachers and support staff union. Our union does not promote political views. We tell our teachers, in fact, my legislative chair is sitting in the back, and even at our union meetings, we do not impress upon our reps and our staff political views. Even with the elections, when I sent out an email, just getting people to remind them to vote, I never used either candidate for governor. Those that ran for the Board know that we don't endorse candidates. We run an open forum for Candidates Night, which all the candidates are invited to attend, just to get your issues out there. But we do not impress that. We definitely don't impress things like pornography. We don't have control over what book is there. Curriculums are developed and approved by the administration and Board of Education, and the teacher's job is just to teach what they are given and told to teach, basically. So I want to make that point, because I just got agitated, where it seemed to imply, well, there are union members, and this is what it's about. It is not. It is not. We don't promote those things. We stay out of it. The only one that actually will teach some, somewhat political, and it's always the facts of politi, or history, are our social studies teachers. As a math teacher, we were always told, do not talk it, you are not an expert in the area. That is not your domain. And for 36 years, I did not. I refrained from doing it. So, I just want to clear the air on that, because the gentleman that just spoke, you know, I understand there may be concerns, but to make that blanket accusation is definitely not true. Bless you. And finally, just in closing, I want to wish everyone in front of me, behind me, out in livestream, and those that will probably watch tomorrow, Happy Thanksgiving. Remember what the day's about. Reverse the terms, giving thanks. Yes, it's about eating turkey and watching football and all, but I know I am very thankful for what I have in my life. When I look compared to other people around the world, what's going on? And yes, we have problems in this country, but it's still, to me, the greatest place to be. And, you know, I'm very thankful for the people around me, the people I've worked with over the years and continue to work with, my family, my friends. That's what really the holiday is about. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. You know, this week is Army-Navy game? Go Army, beat Navy.
I think we're, what, 10-1 now?
I don't know about that. We just let you win once.
I was just laughing. I gotta be honest. I was just laughing.
All right, so, anybody else? Yes, Mr. Ross.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to let everyone know, as we move into the heating season, that no matter what the weather, no matter how cold it is outside, no matter how deep the freeze, what's great about Edison High can never be denied. I just wanted to start off by shouting out my FCC LA, which went this week to the Fall Conference, and it's just too many goals to list. I'm gonna make you listen to all of their names when we have our, yeah, I hear my percussion going on in the background. But we also have so many golds and so many silvers, and so many first places, so many repeat winners in our FCC LA, that when we do our awards ceremony here, you'll get to hear all of those names, but I'd be remiss if I didn't shout them out. I thank Ms. Luang for filling in. I'd love Ms. Rubiano, who also set up in the front as a part of the District's Wellness Initiative, as a part of the strategic plan, were the Walls of Gratitude that were set up. And we've got so many different things going on that I want to hype up and get people to go out to. Some of them were mentioned earlier, but you can't get enough. Starting next week, it's like almost every night, every week, on December 2nd, our choir is gonna do their performance, but they're doing it a little bit different. They got a full church organ. They've got high brass, low brass. They're gonna be at the Crescent Avenue Presbyterian Church in Plainfield, because we got 130 students in the choir, five different choirs. That's gonna be around 6 o'clock. You should get there. Get there early. If anybody wants a ticket, you can contact me. I'll connect you with our director, Mr. Lissner. But that's gonna be fantastic. It's gonna be candlelit for part of it. It's gonna be absolutely wonderful. On the 3rd, we go into conferences, where we have our parent conferences, little short briefs, where our parents can continue to have that face-to-face with their students, teachers, try to learn what's the programs and what are the things going on. Our theater department, demonstrating our creativity of our students. It's gonna be on Friday. They're doing a one-act show, which is a series of one-act plays written and directed by students. Then on Saturday, the 6th, we've got Breakfast for Santa. So if you've got the little kids around, check the emails for the details, go on the website. We're gonna be doing a little bit of a Happy Holiday cheer there. Going into the next week, it continues. The band is gonna be on the 10th. On the 9th, Ms. Rubiano talked about the famed presentations that are gonna be here in the cafeteria. And we finish up, I'd be remiss if I didn't shout out Ms. Militia and the Edison Orchestra that opened up the board meeting tonight. Their concert is gonna be on the 17th, the day before the next board meeting. So, all of these great events, please go out. I'm discounting the opening of all of the sports season that'll be taking place. We'll see more of those in January. But I would be to echo the sentiments of Mr. Revnack. It is that season of thankfulness. I'm thankful, aside for my orchestra room, but I'm thankful for the opportunity to be the principal of this fine school for so many years. I'm thankful for my family, for our health. I'm thankful for each and every student and faculty member that comes through those doors every day, trying to make this world a better place. I'm thankful for all of the families that trusted in us to give their kids the best education. Just checking, Fox News said that Edison, said that New Jersey was number one in the country, and that was from Fox News Philly, so who would go wrong with them? But I want everybody to recognize that we should be grateful for those things. Take time. Say please, say thank you. Enjoy your families. Soak it in, and let's get ready for a great December. Thanks.
Okay. I'd like to thank you for your leadership in this school, and just want to make sure that you tell every orchestra kid they're gonna get a brand-new orchestra room, because some of them didn't know. All right. All right, thank you. All right, anybody else? Sidon, can I have a motion to close public comments?
Motion to close.
Okay, I'll take second.
All right, so now we're open up for board comments. Board members. Yeah, Jenny.
I know we've heard this a few times already, but if you had the opportunity to go past JP Stevens and see all of those flags, it was just so beautiful, and I have to give administration a lot of credit, but in particular, Mr. Robinson, he did a beautiful job to honor all of our veterans, the ones that returned and the ones that didn't. It was very touching, and I was very, very happy to be there. I was also there for the fitness opening, too, and that is a thank you to Dr. Alderelli, Jeff Decoco, and Horizon. And it's really, really a beautiful thing, and you should try and go see it. We have a really nice one here, and this one is just as nice at JP. And lastly, I would also like to wish all of you a very blessed and happy Thanksgiving with your families. Enjoy the day and enjoy each other. Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, Ralph.
Yeah, a couple things. I was very impressed with our two student representatives today. They did a fantastic job, knowledgeable what's going on, involved in their community and their school. So that's a big thank you to their two principals that get them involved and keep them involved. I also attended a, at JP Stevens, a play. It was called You Can't Take It With You. I'd like to thank Mr. Severino for inviting me, and it was a wonderful production in that new auditorium. Sound system was unbelievable, so everything worked out well. I also attended the, this past Saturday, the EHS Cheer Competition here that they had. Eight hours of fun. Someone told me that, but eight hours, which is unbelievable to hold a great competition, and I think that's a great fundraiser for them also. Also, let's see. I'm looking forward to attending that choir in Plainfield, so hopefully Mr. Ross, he'll finally buy me a cup of coffee. All right, thank you. And also, he brings coffee for himself. They only have one cup sometimes at that Dunkin'. And then lastly, not lastly, but Joe's not here, but I want to wish him an early 40th birthday coming up. Joe Romano's birthday is next Tuesday, so I'd like to wish him a happy birthday in advance. And then again, Happy Thanksgiving to everyone and their families, and I hope you enjoy it and enjoy the festivities. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on that side?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Shi? Yeah, I wasn't able to attend the ceremony at the fitness court, because it's during work hours, but I did try out those facilities over the weekend, because I just, I was just curious. And if you happen to be like me, always overeat, you know, during holiday seasons, you might want to check it out. It's free, open to everybody, every residence, you know, of course, after school hours. And that's, with that being said, I just want to wish everybody a very happy, joyful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on this side? Yes.
Yeah, well, I have a comment about giving the real-world opportunities to our students. You know, I learned about the Rutgers fame program. It's a real-world opportunity. We had a similar internship with a company called Addy.ai, where five of our students did the internship. And the feedback that I received was they were very impressed by the work that our students did. I think a couple of students came up with some idea that enhance the product of the company that they are offering, and they are trying to figure out how to extend the internship for next few more months. So, Dr. Aldarelli, you may hear about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, you just left, that, you know, we know your birthday is coming up, and Ralph, just wish you an early birthday, 40th birthday.
40th, right?
Well, thank you, but nobody's supposed to know how old I am.
Forty-one, forty-one.
You're turning 40.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any comments? Board member comments?
A happy holiday season. That's one thing. Remember, the Edison Township Board of Ed, it consists of a superintendent and a bunch of assistant superintendents, some supervisors, there's a lot, and directors. But the main ones are our teachers. They're the ones that work every day. Not that these people don't work every day, but without them, we wouldn't be as good as we are. You make us look good. You meet every board member that sits up here and listen. You make us look good. I especially want to tell you that. Thank you. Thank you. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and you'll be back on Monday, right? I think so. Have a nice holiday season. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? So, it's my turn. When you all walked in today, you saw the beautiful remodeling we did at this great school. You know, the entrance, the security office over there, and, you know, you have opportunity to go a little bit further down to take a look at the brand-new caf, you know, remodeled, brand-new cafeteria, and how beautiful it is. It's all done in the summer, and, you know, this coming summer, we'll continue the work. Mr. Ross, right, we'll continue to do some more work in the school to make it beautiful, more welcoming to our students. So, I just want to read something I received today from residents. "It was so nice to see the special education children from Woodrow Wilson at the mall this morning. They took pictures with Santa Claus and had a lunch at the food court. The staff did a wonderful job working with the children, even helping those who could order and pay for their own food. Please give a shout-out to them at tonight's meeting." So, I promise this person, I'm gonna read this, and I'd like to thank all the staff who took our students to the, you know, Woodrow Wilson Special Ed students to the mall today. We talked about fitness court. We're very grateful that Edison is the only school this year in New Jersey to receive the grant to have a fitness court. As Mrs. Penn said, you know, especially after the holiday, you know, it's open to public. Go there and work it out. I think I'm probably the first one who needs to do that. I'd also like to say congratulations to Dr. Cassane, who defended his thesis yesterday, and now he's a doctor now. Congratulations. A couple things that was approved today. You know, we also heard that we finally won the case with JMI. The JMI construction can start. It was delayed for more than a year, for whatever reasons, and this, you know, court hearing pushed it even further. So, finally, finally, we're able to start the construction. What JMI is well-needed. The other thing that was mentioned in today's finance facility committee is that we are going out a bid for air conditioning for JMI, GMP, and Washington. And this is, you know, my campaign promise, and we're delivering it. And let's remember, all of this are done with no tax increase. So, these are the three schools, and let's see if we can get a good price. We hope that the winter time is always, you know, to our advantage. If we have some extra money left, the next school will be Ben Franklin. And the design has already been done, and if we have extra money, the bid is more to our advantage, well, we'll start the fourth school, Ben Franklin School. And at last, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see everyone in December. Oh, I forgot to mention, congratulations to Mrs. Penn and Vishal Patel and Russell Azzarello for winning the school board election, and looking forward to work with them in the next year. Thank you very much.
Motion to close.
Second.
All right.
Gotcha.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the media is adjourned. Thank you very much.